Meeting of the McKinnon County Order of Appeals. Let me just read some information here as I get to it. This is case number 2023-001, involving two parcels, 1213-10007, code 29, and 12-12-3001, oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, 12-12-300-012. The property consists of approximately five acres and is located in the north side of intersection of West South Street, approximately 1.245 feet east of the intersection of West South Street and South Rose Farm Road in Syndica Township. The applicants are Craig Crandall and Jacqueline Crandall. The request is for reclassification from an A1 agricultural district to an A2 agricultural district with a variation to allow two residences on a single parcel. Publisher's certificate of publication from a newspaper is dated January 19, 2023, and thereby meets ordinance requirements. Affidavit posting was signed and date posted was January 31, 2023, and thereby meets ordinance requirements. Affidavit mailing was signed and date mailed was January 17, 2023, and thereby meets ordinance requirements. Survey has been checked against the petition, legal notice and publication in the newspaper, and all three match. Filing fees have been paid. Endangered species consultation was not required for this petition, and McKinnon County Soil and Water Conservation District report has been received. This time I'd like to introduce the board members who are here today. Vicky Gardner, Nunde Township; Laney Acosta, Alda Township; Robert Cosin, Algottman Township; Kirch Knobel, Riley Township; Donald Smolinski, Crafton Township; David Stone, McKinnon Township.
And you forgot Jessica.
Jessica.
Hi.
Oh, I'm sorry, Jessica.
Door.
Jessica Beverly, Door Township. We read these off and make them part of the record because the State Dispatch requires there to be only one board member per township. So I was just going to mention to you, Craig, that you can take that microphone off the stand. I think you speak loud enough that you probably don't need to do that.
Yeah, it must be okay. The crowd will be able to hear me.
You're welcome. There, you can take a picture.
Okay. Oh, there we go.
Okay, well, there's no one other than you, Craig, so I'm assuming that you're going to make the presentation.
I am going to do that.
Of course, you have to raise your hand.
I swear me a book. Sorry. The other way.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, all truth, loving about the truth? If so, answer "I do."
I do.
Thank you. You want to proceed?
Certainly. First of all, thank you all for coming out, whether it's not a lesson ideal, so I'm very pleased that you all came out. I also want to congratulate the chairman. Very few times do I hear anyone correctly pronounce Nunde Township. Back to the days when Gary Verdung was the treasurer and you would do the tax sale. He said, "We're next going to do Nunde Township." This is the only place you're going to hear "Nunde Township." Everyone else calls it "Nunda Township," so thank you.
Am I correct?
You are correct. That's what I'm congratulating. Yeah, you are correct. Nunde Township is the correct pronunciation. I want to make note of that for the record. For those who haven't known me, my name is Craig Crandall. I'm an attorney from Crystal Lake, Illinois. I live here in Woodstock, Illinois, and I'm also the petitioner here. Property in question is 15016 as well as 15012 West South Street, sometimes known as West South Street Road. Is indicated in the petition. I reside there. The home which we reside in was built in approximately 1964. The original farmhouse from the 1920s, '30s is also there, and hence the reason for asking for the variation to allow both the existing home and the other, and the original farmhouse. The entire property was Zoned A1, has been the entire time that my wife's family and I have owned the property. They originally came out, built the home, and my in-laws resided in that home for many years. Oh, now, approximately 30 years or so ago, they moved to an adjacent property, lived there for a significant number of years. Following my father-in-law passing, they moved out. We have been residing in this property for approximately 30 years. Through some family estate planning, we cut out the five acres that we're here for today, and I need to rezone that into the A2 district for a couple of reasons. One, for the purpose in case I ever have a tragedy at the house and I want to rebuild it, I need to do that, as well as financing purposes. In order to refinance, I need to rezone it into the A2. That's the reason we are here for, for you today. I have represented numerous people in the A2 rezoning, including back when you could take a larger piece of property that was not suitable for farming, split it into many A2s to the dismay of the county board and members of the zoning board, last being on Button Road, and they stopped allowing that. So very familiar with the A2, which was originally created to allow farmers and those to split off the parts of the farm, including a house or residence, and keep the rest farming. And this is exactly that at this time. So the entire property is about 89 acres. This is five acres, including the improvements. It, as you can see on the photographic text and showing up front, includes both residences, and it does leak into the farming area just a little bit in order to meet the five-acre requirement, to meet the Platte Act. Frontage, 330 foot, is also meets requirement, so not asking for any variations other than to maintain the original farmhouse that has been there since the time the family bought the property and we constructed the residence that is there. In my application, went through all of the applicable standards for meeting a map amendment as well as variance, and I guess, do you want me to run through those, or should I run through all those? I will do that. Thank you so much. All right. Making sure for the record. So for the map amendment, we're going to go through, is the proposed zoning compatible with existing uses and zoning in the area? As indicated in the staff report, everything around us is zoned agricultural. So we're asking for A2, which is compatible with the A1 that is there, indicating that we're not adding any additional uses beyond what is there. To what extent has the value of the subject property diminished by the existing zoning? The zoning itself doesn't diminish the value, but not having it A2 does. As I indicated, in order to refinance, we need to rezone it to A2 to make it still buildable because of the fact that if anything happens, the home would not be able to do that. So as indicated, current zoning due to size of parcel, less than 40 acres, diminishes value not to allow us to rebuild. Is there benefit to health, safety, welfare of the public under the current zoning designation? Current zoning is beneficial to health, safety, and welfare because it is consistent with all of the surrounding zoning, no changes in use. Is this property suitable for uses allowed? It is. It continues to be and always has been for uses allowed, and upon completion of the rezoning, there will be no changes as to the use or no impact. The property has not been vacant. How long has it been vacant? It is not vacant. It has been a residence, as I've indicated, for just under 60 years. Is there a public need for the proposed use? There is no specific quote "public need" for this, however, the use of rezoning other than, as I've indicated, in order to make it in compliance with the ability to be able to rebuild. Is the proposed use consistent with the 2030 Beyond Comprehensive Plan? The proposed use and plan, I believe, as indicated in the staff report, is consistent with the comprehensive plan, and there are no changes anticipated. That relates to the amendment from A1 to A2. In regard to the variation, the variation which we are requesting relates to the fact that there are two residences here. As I've indicated, at the time that the home, the residence that we reside in was built, they allowed it, it was allowed to have two residences, so we are not changing that. What hardship is placed due to the particular surrounding shape or topographic conditions? The hardship here is that the home has been in place since approximately 1961, '62. Subsequently, 1964 is when the home was actually constructed and remains there. How is the hardship unique to this property and not applicable to all properties? Well, if you had a property today of this zoning category, you could not build two homes on it, but at the time that it was done, you were allowed to. So it's unique that has been in place for approximately 60 years. Other than increased monetary gain was the purpose of the variation. Variation, the intent is to clean up the issue of inability to rebuild the home in the event there was a catastrophe. Does the property owner or past owners create the difficulty or hardship? The hardship was a result of the split of the property, as I indicated, splitting it for family estate planning purposes and the five-acre portion that we own separate from the balance. Will the variation be detrimental to public welfare or injurious to other property or improvements? There shall be no detriment or issues to other properties, as it has been the same configuration in excess of 50 years, and to allow this will not impact any of the surrounding properties. Will the variation impair inadequate supply of light and air to adjacent property, increase congestion, risk of fire, or substantially diminish or repair property values? It will not, as the variation has indicated, will not impair any of those, and has been the situation in excess of 50 years. Will this variation confer special privilege to the owner that is denied to others with property in the same district? It will not confer special privilege, as this is, the situation here existed previously. And as I indicated, I don't believe someone could come in today and say, "I wanted to build a second residence on my property, Zoned A1 or A2." That just would not be, wouldn't that be allowed? Short of that, I don't really have much else. I'm happy to answer questions that you may have in relation to our application today. As I indicate, we're matching, the use is similar or identical to the uses around. In the materials here, you have photographs showing, I don't know if you want to flip to those, I have some additional that I can pass that show the improvements there. You can see, you know, it has a circular drive. That's looking to the north as you're coming in, where the vehicle is parked, what would be the eastern side, eastern drive. It's a horseshoe that goes around. Looking straight on on this photograph, the lighter colored blue, you can't quite see that, it's a blue home. That's the original farmhouse. And then to the left in the tan, that was the residence that was constructed in 1964. There was an addition put in there about 25 years ago, all permitted, and that is where we currently reside. I can share with you, we can pass.
Where was that picture taken?
When was that picture taken?
Where?
Where?
Who took it?
Oh, that's you guys.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We did?
That's okay.
That's a county vehicle, the picture.
Correct. Yeah. But I'll pass around from you, and these are a couple of close-ups taken on a great sunny day following the last time we had snow, which did not last all that long. So these are photographs that I took, showing, it shows the two residences. You can see it here in the photographs that I passed shows, you can see the relation of the two homes where they are. You can see it pretty well here, but I have another photograph that I've got to share with you here that just shows the improvements here. But short of that, there's really nothing else really all that complicated about what we're looking to do here, as I indicated. This is traditionally what the A2 had been allowed for, to allow you to split land off of otherwise agriculturally-owned property. The property to the north always currently farmed approximately, I guess, there's about 84 acres behind the home, probably 75 of it, give or take, is probably farmed. There's a pond out there. There is an irrigation ditch that runs through it. For those of you that are familiar, the, and our pipeline runs through the center of the property here as well, coming down from the north, has been there for all the years that we have resided there as well. So short of that, are there any questions any of you have? I'm happy to answer those.
Mrs. Beverly?
I don't have any questions.
Mr. Acosta?
No, I did not.
Mr. Smolinski?
Is there someone living in the 15012 home?
Yes, currently rented out.
Yes, it's rented out?
It is.
Because I did see there were some vehicles parked outside.
Correct. Yeah, it is. It has been and continues to be rented out. We're very fortunate. We had done some work, and we needed some cosmetic work, and the painter who painted it really liked it. A nice young man who's been a fabulous tenant, so really, and he likes your gardens, so we had a bonus in that. We're really terrible gardeners, he's very good. No long answer to that.
So you intend to rent it in the future?
Correct. Yeah.
The other question I had had to do with one of the major reasons that you have for coming before us today was, well, refinancing.
Correct.
And what case would that be?
The reason, we could not, to the dismay of my wife, she has, Anna indicated, my wife's very happy that I'm wrapping this up. Because if we split it off as a five-acre parcel, Zoned A1, the loan companies would not allow me to refinance because it was, basically, it wasn't a legal parcel. It was an A1 parcel that was under 40 acres. So again, if something happened and the house were destroyed, there's a chance I wouldn't be able to get it rebuilt. So in order to do that, they required me to come in and rezonate.
So are both of the homes fully insured?
Yeah. Oh, yeah, always happened.
Oh, okay.
And they can be insured. The issue was, the issue was they're fine as they are today, but if something happens, that's where the issue comes. And so for the financing purposes, so if you want to do this, here's what you got to do.
So even though they're fully insured, and if you had a catastrophe happen, the insurance would obviously pay, but you just want to back up to find?
Well, I want to be able to build a house with the money they give me, yeah. It's not better to come out than after the house was knocked out, because she made me unhappy we didn't refinance. She'd be really unhappy when I tell her we can't rebuild the house because we, I didn't take care of this under the, the shoemakers' kids have the worst shoes. The lawyers' kids always get their work done last.
I love that question.
Thank you very much.
Mrs. Acosta?
Yes, Craig, my only question is regarding, it looks like access to the farm field then behind your house would come just east of the property line, or just west of the property line for you then? When looking on the area, maybe Anna, you could bring that up.
You're going to go back, yeah.
So it looks like just to the right of where your boundary line is, there is?
Yeah, there's, we left a road that they monitor, they can come through that way. I mean, the reality is, they come down the driveway.
Okay. And you're allowing them to do that?
Oh, certainly.
But in some, yeah, if your property was to be sold at some point, there's?
Yeah, there's room that they would.
They can handle that, like, parcel.
Correct. They would come, there's access to South Street there. You'll see the, that's the east side. And if we went back, if you go back to the survey, my recollection is, is it 150? How wide?
Yeah, I don't think we have a copy of the survey in our packet. But, you know, I just want to make sure that there's enough for farm equipment, big farm. Oh, we do have a copy of the survey.
Yes, I think.
But it doesn't show.
It might not show the distance.
The adjacent width for it to go, you know, making that corner to get into the field.
Yeah, I think that that would be an issue. I mean, if that ever was to be an issue, that we were to sell it, I would just give them an easement or something. But they come through the driveway right now.
Okay. All right. That was my only question. Thank you.
Mrs. Gardner?
So if this is, if this goes through and this becomes an A2 parcel, and then you go to sell it, you have to sell both houses together?
We always have to sell together. I'll also share with you that my dear closest person or friend, Thomas Chester Zank, zoning attorney to the stars, called me up and goes, "Hey, I saw you had your application here in the paper. How come you didn't do two parcels?" All right, well, Tom, I only have 330-foot of frontage, and I couldn't create side yards even with, as creative as I and or Tom might be. Yeah, the houses all stay together. Yeah, they're not, you can't split them up. There's just not enough room, and if you see the proximity of the two, no. This is one package, so. I don't plan on ever leaving until it's my last day, so I'm not really too concerned about that.
So you don't care what happens after?
I really don't, no. My children might, but, yeah, but right now, yeah, you could do it because of just the sizing and frontage and all that. Even with creative variances, you wouldn't be able to get side yards and all that. So, yeah, they stay together.
Okay. All right. That was my only curiosity.
That's good, Mrs..
Go ahead. No, you go first, and then I'll pick my phone.
Okay, one question and one brief editorial comment.
Sure.
Start with the question. In the upper right northeast corner of the property, as evidenced on the aerial photograph, there's just a round area, it looks like it's sandy or something, a grain of topography, it's 852 feet, so it's one of the highest spots on this lot. Your neighbor to the east is higher. What is that? Is that sand or gravel?
No. That is the kind of, as you're looking at it on the left-hand side, that's the burn pile, and then the rest of it is really kind of, is hay. So it's just long grass.
Oh, just dry?
It's just dry grass, yeah. So they don't farm that part, because it's, it's dry and it's low. And so, yeah, there's an area that for whatever reason, when they farm, they've never have farmed that particular area. So, yeah, it kind of looks like sand, but it's really just long white grass.
Yeah, I looked at the drawing and I looked at all the outbuildings, and I was wondering what that rectangular object, is that a Russian tank sitting there in the middle of that hay?
Oh, which, which one?
Leave it to you.
Oh, okay. That's no longer there. But what that was, the, one of my tenants had a, it was a trailer, one of those trailers that has a wood top and two wheels. And so that area there, I sometimes from time to time have a propensity to burn grass. So one day I was burning that grass, and the fire kind of got away, and it was creeping, getting closer and closer to that structure, and I was afraid I was going to burn it, burn it out because it was a wood top. I stopped it before it got there. The tenant no longer is there, and I found a young man who was interested in taking away the trailer. So that was kind of a, it's an open-air trailer, two wheels, probably a good, like a 20-footer, but, yeah, so not a tank. It was a trailer, and it has been relocated to some other location.
And now my comment is a follow-up to Mr. Smolinski's question regarding the insurance. Some people may not know this, but if you insure a property that cannot be rebuilt for whatever reason, you will not be paid by the insurance company to claim.
There we go. Talk to Mr. Lomeyer about that.
That's all.
Thank you. Makes it even more important that I secure your votes.
Go ahead, Anna.
So, so back to the second home. So, and maybe this is a question for Anna. So maybe you decide, because that's a smaller home, it's an older home, maybe it's in not as good a shape, you decide to tear down that home now. You could build that second home farther back on the property, a greater separation from your home. Is that possible, Anna?
If the variance to allow a second home is granted, there's no conditions that's being proposed at this time that would limit it to this particular location. So if it let the A2 sit back, I would say probably it could be located anywhere else on the property.
Okay. This, all right. Because then, at that point, then he could come for a split for an E2 if he built a home farther back on the property and then split it into two A2s? Or is that not possible?
He's doing the A2 under the five acres, which is requiring the 330-foot width along the street there. If he met the Platte Act requirements for a smaller, possibly he could resubdivide it.
Probably wouldn't have the road frontage, though, right?
You couldn't, I don't think you could split it under the Platte Act. You'd have to resubdivide it, because under the Platte Act, your exceptions are five acres or more, or a first cut prior to, like, 53 or something like that. So, yeah, you couldn't do it, you couldn't do it that way, and then you'd have to subdivide it, and I don't know, I'm not even sure you could subdivide an A2.
I don't think you could.
You have to come back and zone it E, which would not.
E or R, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't think you could do that. I mean, what you're proposing. And we would have the frontage, but it's only, it's 330-foot of frontage, and I think a one acre is like, what, 175?
It's 150.
Oh.
Okay. Well, that was my question. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else have a question? Hearing none. Let me take a little shot at you here.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
You know, you built a house, the yellow house?
No, my in-laws did in 1964. If I would have built it, I would have been five years old. Despite the fact that I turned 64 today, in 1964, I would have been five.
At 64, you say the house was built?
That's when the house was built, correct, by my dearly departed father-in-law, Daniel Lorriweis.
You're telling us that at that time that it was built, the law provided for?
They allowed him to have the two homes, yeah. That's my understanding, because you never, you never had parents, so I presume.
You don't have the law.
I do not. That's correct. Hundred percent correct.
Like you have the burden of proof.
Oh, well, yeah, okay. Well, I don't, I only know that there have been two houses there since 1964, and when they built it, they didn't, they allowed that to stay that way, and I haven't had this.
Did you live in the house first?
They lived in, no. They lived in the original farmhouse when my wife was, she would have been three. Then they built the home, then they moved into the home that we currently reside into. So we're the second resident. Well, if I count her, she was one of the first residences.
Okay.
Together, we're the second residents, yes.
Okay. I probably should, after giving you that little zing, I'll back up a little bit and say, your dad was very nice to me when I was in a little time in my life, and I went, I believe, to the yellow house for his funeral, or his?
You did. You actually came to our home for what would be, correct, for his shiva, which would be the seven days of mourning following his passing. Yes. He was a really, really great, for those that didn't meet my father-in-law, he was a fat horse individually.
Do we have any conditions?
We are not recommending any conditions, no.
We don't have, because it's his only, okay.
Do you want testimony from staff?
Yeah, is there any testimony to get from, or cross-examination?
No cross-examination. This property is currently Zoned A1. He has meeting standards for a reclassification and the standards for a A2, so we have no concern with that. He is also requesting variance, as we know, for the two houses. Those predate our current regulations. We do not have any major concerns with the two houses being on the property.
Okay, I'm not so sure. I can't hear you well with that mask on, but.
I'm sorry, I'm recovering from a cold, so. It meets the standards for an A, for a reclassification. It meets the standards from an A1 to an A2 reclassification, and also meets the standards for a, for variances for the two houses. Staff does not have any problems with the reclassification to A2 or with the variances.
So, are you in favor of the, has the staff recommending approval of this petition?
We're recommending approval.
Thank you. I have no further questions. This time, we'll close the hearing on the matter and reopen for a voting meeting. Entertain a motion to approve the, approve both requests at the same time.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Moved by Linnea Kushter, second.
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Gardner. Discussion, starting with Linnea.
Yes, I believe this is pretty much a classic A2 as far as these buildings have been constructed legally. They are, they have been part of an agricultural parcel for over 60 years. It is in an agricultural area, it's, you know, it just fits in well, it will continue to be agricultural. The only difference being that there are two homes constructed on this parcel, which is, you know, it, that happened a lot on lots of farms, that there were two homes, including my, the farm that I live on, that there were two homes on the farm. So, this has been divided into, split off as far as estate planning, and so they need a variation in order to have two homes on this parcel. I believe it meets the standards in our ordinance for a variation, because the hardship has not been caused by this family. It predates our zoning ordinance that these homes were here, and so I think it meets the standards for that, as well as for the change from the A1 to the A2. The petitioner's done a good job addressing all the standards, and I'm in favor of the request.
Mr. Astral.
I agree with Ms. Kushter. I'm in favor of the petition as it stands.
Mrs. Gardner?
I agree as well. It is different, being two homes. I have pity on whoever tries to something out of the road, you know, one parcel of two houses, but not my problem, not your problem, so it's fine.
Mr. Smolinski?
I agree with the comments of my colleagues, and I will support the petition.
Mr. Cozen?
Thank you. Chairman, I'd tune for the factual basis, and also take note that the tax parcels are actually, while they're in the same township, they're actually in two separate sections and in two separate blocks, which tends to lend to the confusion over time, as well as I do enjoy the insight about the proper pronunciation of Nunda, as it is something that seems to have been percolating since the township changed its name in 1850. But beyond that, I won't delay the vote any longer as I wish to support this petition as well.
Thank you. I feel vindicated. Mrs. Beverly?
I don't have any comments. I'm in support of the petition.
And I agree with everything that's been said so far, and I would support the petition. Gardner?
Yes.
Kushter?
Yes.
Cozen?
Yes.
Schalb?
Yes.
Smolinski?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
And Stone, where am I? The motion passes seven to zero, and we'll report to the county court with a recommendation.
Great, thank you all, drive safely.
Yes, sir.